I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, Brad is sick today, Ryan, you have anything to counsel?
I don't really have much for the counseling.
No, um, the, uh, everything, major projects been completed.
Yeah, the street signs will be up, all locates are finally done for the street signs. The stop sign will go up and then the no outlet sign and then the yield sign will go up in that addition. And then there'll be no parking on Hickory and Lynnwood. Other than that, just been trying to get the lease picked up and all the other, never any more projects.
And we talked about, uh, lighting on, lighting up the new monument out there. But I haven't looked at it at night, but you said looking at it at night, the street lights seem to illuminate it fine.
It lights it up, I'm assuming it's, see if you want it to be brighter, I guess that'd be the question, if you want more light pointing directly at it or not.
Wouldn't you anticipate the street signs maybe going in?
This week.
Oh.
Locates was done Fri- they were finished on Friday on locates.
Good.
They're having, they're having a hard time locating that addition, I don't know how they, I get the same locates all the time, but those roads aren't designated as roads.
Okay.
So I tried not to do it, have to do the whole addition, I tried to do it where they only have to do areas I needed.
Right.
They're, they're having issues of being that tracked in there.
Well, you never do locates anyways.
Yeah, but they, they're, they're finished them on Friday, the locates were done Friday.
Okay.
Damn.
Good.
And there's gas, my word.
I'm sure.
Yeah, there was, right where the sign's gonna go, so I gotta figure out how many of the sign.
Locates on that and everything.
Yeah, yeah, cause guys, this far in, my still posts will go right through it, so.
Alright, how much longer for leaves?
Um, we'll probably go to the end of next week, depending on what the weather like, I mean, there's, most trees are bare right now, but, but that doesn't mean.
Someone put all of your leaves out in the middle of Carl Street, I mean.
It wasn't me.
It was next to you though, wasn't it?
No, two doors down.
Two doors down.
Yeah. On the corner.
Big fan.
Everything got.
I'll immediately wait after it rains to.
I had a couple calls over that, so.
We'll pick up tomorrow, if it's not raining, we'll pick them up tomorrow, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't bother too much.
Do you do east and west or rock and sound tomorrow?
I don't know, you should ask that question. Right now, we're, right now, we, like today, this morning, we just went, we were picking up every, down every street, we had all the inner town here done, but we didn't, anything on the other side of trash we didn't get to.
It's gonna rain tomorrow.
So you're, you're not gonna get to Willie's on our street?
Snow, Thursday, yeah.
I have someone that's not very happy.
Can't help it.
Well, she said she called like ten days ago.
Well, we don't, we don't pick them up on order?
No.
She called, she called last week, but she put them out.
Yeah.
And we just never made it there. She called, she called in Friday.
I think they were already tired of it.
I thought they were, so it seems like Tuesday and Thursday.
Yeah, whatever day, we just never made it down that way last year.
Okay, alright.
Her street did get picked up once, but hers weren't.
Yeah, I saw that.
Hers weren't out yet.
Okay. I thought they were, but, okay.
You've got a lot to do, you guys do.
Thank you for your service.
It's been a busy, it's been a busy month or so.
Just tell them calm down, they'll get them when we get them. That's how I feel.
Everybody gets spoiled.
We're just mall chargers, we don't put down.
Once a week.
If you pick up Jim, let's say, oh, he's coming right over here, no, we don't.
I've got a horseshoe drive right next door here, and it'd be easier if you just drove through there and sucked them all up.
Get him back out.
That's an idea.
There you go.
All kinds of ideas.
Go send your memo, a memo.
Alright, minutes from last meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All's in favor, raise your hand. Anybody abstain?
Staying.
Okay. Is there updates for Lifewise?
Uh, that's what I was wondering.
Um, they are still investigating their building, as far as I know. Met with the county building department and they lined out that the next steps are truly that they need to pick what structure they're using, because what type of structure it is determines, uh, what the permitting actually looks like. So once they get their structure figured out, then they can move forward with getting the building permits pulled and move forward that way, so. I have not heard any updates since that meeting with the city, or with the county building department, so.
Okay, sounds like regardless, moving forwards.
It is still moving forward, yes.
Are they building their own building?
No, they're gonna put a mod unit in of some sort, a modular building, be it a double wide or a single wide. They're not exactly sure what they're gonna be able to get a hold of.
I just seen the, the banners up out there on the fence and I just didn't know if we heard anything back, are, are, did we, did they sign the contract? Ever, or were they still waiting to do that?
I've not seen anything come back on that yet either, so.
Contract still has good fun.
I'll, I'll reach out and I'll double check with Kevin and make sure there's nothing outstanding on our end on that too.
That's all I had on that, I was just wondering, we haven't heard about it in a while.
Yeah, I was wondering that the last week.
I seen their banners up out there and they said they were supposed to start in September and.
Yeah, so it doesn't look like it's gonna be their school year, or maybe it will.
Maybe the beginning, or maybe next semester, but we'll see.
Is anything ever slow on time?
No, it's, it's still making progress, it's painfully slow.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, how about warrants?
Warrants and access of five hundred dollars, Baker Tilly for two thousand three hundred twenty dollars, Bank of New York for forty two thousand, four hundred twenty eight thousand eleven dollars and fifty cents. Some of these are from back in.
Yeah, October.
October, so when I was doing the bank reconciliation, there were things that, some things weren't put in, so they'll get put in later like this. Uh, but that's the bond payment, that's not an actual payment, that's just an electronic payment out of the Bank of New York. That, so the next line underneath that, the thirty three thousand four hundred fifty dollars and ninety six cents, we pay our operating bank account to the Bank of New York account, and then they take that big chunk of money out of there every six months or whatever it is. So we pay in a little bit of money from one bank to another bank, and then you'll see a big chunk like that taken out every six months. Um, BL Anderson, four thousand six hundred seventy four dollars. Uh, that's the same thing for that bounty, that's the same thing, that's just water transfers, that's not actual money moved. Uh, Colonial Life, nine hundred eighty five dollars and thirty six cents. Dozer Works, eight hundred thirty five dollars. Indiana Michigan Power, six thousand seven hundred ninety one dollars and seventy four cents. JP Landscaping and Lawn, seven hundred, uh, seven hundred fifteen dollars. Caps, Green Lawn, five hundred seventy dollars and twenty one cents. Nationwide, one thousand three dollars forty nine cents. Stopstick LTD, five hundred thirty eight dollars. Verizon Wireless, five hundred sixty three dollars and fifty nine cents. WM Corp for eight thousand three hundred forty one dollars and ninety eight cents, another WM Corp for thirteen thousand two hundred seventy three dollars and fifteen cents.
Well, that one, one of them says one fifteen, what's that about? Check date. Eight thousand forty, eight thousand three hundred.
Uh, this, oh, that was one that I had under a wrong appropriation and I had to cancel the one out from January and.
But they got back, but did they get, were paid back in January or just now?
This was, yeah, this was already paid back in January, this, what happened was I took that money and switched the appropriation. It doesn't just switch the appropriation originally, it voids out the original one and then puts in a new, a new transaction, but that was already paid out.
Okay.
But there's no way to just, you can't just, everything that has to be done, nothing can just be moved, everything, your original transaction has to be voided and then you have to make a correct transaction.
And it's just now showing up in November, is what you're saying?
Oh, I fixed it, I fixed it in November, so that's why it's showing up now. Any money that is in there, usually what I, what would happen before is I would take a batch of bills and I would split it up, say, two weeks, and I have one batch of bills for two weeks, and everything that I put on this are for those two weeks. And really, you should have everything, any transaction, any voids out that we have, anytime, like something like that happens, it should all be in here to be approved. So, and I didn't know that before, so I was putting, that's why like two meetings ago, we signed that one that had like eleven pages from the beginning of the year, of things I never added in, it was mostly payroll. Um, that's why you see so many like weird things in here that normally wouldn't be in here, something from like, you know.
The monies then you're saying that were back, that backdated, have already been allocated back in January, for instance?
A check got sent out.
Right.
And under one appropriation, so I had sent it out under.
So in other words, we didn't pay five, five hundred fifty six thousand?
No, no, not even close, that's just.
I guess that's why I'm confused, I get, this is a little confusing to me, but.
No, so, so we have different buckets for different things, so we have, like this, this came out of trash, but before, maybe, I, I forget where I put it, maybe I took it out of the general fund and it was really supposed to be taken out of this trash fund. So, once I realized that I took it out of the wrong one, I can't just change it? I have to void the first one, so what it does is, it takes that money that I had spent out of the first bucket, say, puts that money back in there, and then corrects it, and then takes it out of the correct bucket.
Is anybody else confused?
No. You guys getting that?
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, think about this.
As long as we're not paying this much money out of, that's what I was getting at, this figure right here.
Think about it like this, you have two kiddie pools and I have a bucket, and I went to bucket A and I took it out and then ten months later I said, I wasn't supposed to do that, I put it back into bucket A and actually take it out of bucket B.
And it just shows up this late, huh? That's what.
No, cause I just did it.
He just did it.
It's cause I just took, I just figured out that I wasn't supposed to take it out of there.
So, next time, show the credit and do the other one too.
You can't.
Can't? Does it?
Cause you guys are, cause it, cause it was already approved.
Okay.
Cause what, once there's a, once there's an item on there, once I had it all, it takes all duplicates out and just gives you the ones that you have not been put onto an APB yet.
Okay.
Okay.
Vicky.
But, but.
If the credit.
Yeah, I understand all that, I just, I was, I was getting at this figure right here.
Yeah, that's because of, that's because of the Bank of New York transaction.
Yeah, that's four hundred thousand dollars, and also, your payroll too, come, is out here, when it norm, when Tim used to have them separated like that too.
Yeah.
But you don't have to do that, you can just put everything on one, so you gotta think twenty thousand.
I just wanna understand, I mean, I'm not questioning your job, but I just wanna understand it.
But no, but this big transaction, four hundred twenty eight thousand is almost all of that.
Yeah, that's massive, okay, I get it, alright.
But you can see on there, see how it creates these transactions too, see this one is like payroll, but then this one's net wages. It's cause when, it's cause when it gets imported in, it has to have the transaction to offset, because when you receipt stuff in, it takes it, like the, the net pay, it will take out the, the gross, it has the gross pay and then it takes out all the taxes and everything that people are supposed to pay, their portion of things, and that's why you have the offsetting transaction of twenty thousand dollars. So really, you're looking at this, you go, why is payroll on here twice? Here's a fourteen thousand dollar transaction, here's a twenty thousand, well, it's cause fourteen thousand is actually what we paid out to people with, actually hit, hit people's bank accounts, but twenty thousand was what the gross pay was and then you have to import all that in, that way you can take out the taxes.
That's crazy software, I mean, I don't know, I've done bookkeeping before, I've never seen quite, but as long as you're happy and it's working for you, it's all legit. I say we approve the warrants.
Second. I have a question over, um, INM.
Yeah.
Is that for all the street lights in the city, not the main street lights?
Uh, they send us bills and this is all, that's, that's a combined amount, we're set up.
Cause it used to be the main street lights were like twenty five dollars or thirty six dollars.
This is a, these are all combined bills, so what they do is they send out generally four bills, I think is what we get in and like the three bills will be the street lights, and then the one will have a, um, a condensed bill and it has everything labeled out, so this isn't all out of one bucket, this is out of.
All INM.
Three, yeah, this is out of three different spots, it's just, it just condenses everything of what we actually paid out on this one to that.
Cause the description was main street lights, that's why I was worried.
Yeah, yeah, so your description, you'll, you'll see over here, like the, like that one, yeah, that main street lights, this is really, um, it's probably twelve lines, so we print out the check, when you print out a check, it actually tells you what each amount is for, for each item. And so our check stub, you know, it's like half and half, but the entire checks, the entire top half of the check stub is full because there's like twelve lines.
Yeah.
Cause it gets broken down to come out of each, each individual department by what address is. And that helps, you know, that helps with Ryan, when Ryan goes and he says, well, how much do we spend on, uh, at the, at the treatment plant? And then I can go back, pull up that address and look at all the money that's come out under that address and add up the amounts and he'll know exactly what that is.
Awesome.
But it only shows one line, it condenses all that, this first, this first merchant, I had no idea why it did that, this is like, this is probably like two return payments that got back to us, so what happens is, is they'll give us the money, if someone pays it, and then they take it back out. So we have to receipt it in as if we received it, and then we have to send it back out as if we're sending the money back to the person because that's what the bank transa, you have to reflect what the bank says.
Can't show you.
So you can't just take it off and go, oh yeah, it didn't happen.
So you're happy with this software then?
Yeah, yeah.
It's good. I think it's weird.
This, if, if I just did it with the bills, I mean, there'd probably only be about ten or fifteen lines on these, but you guys are technically supposed to approve every dollar that goes out.
Right, right.
So, the way we're, I was doing it before is technically wrong, if they came in, they could be upset about it and say, no, you guys, they have to approve every single dollar that you spend, but for the last eight years, it wasn't like that. Tim would just give you, whatever he did on this batch of bills is what he would send you, and then he'd have a separate one for payroll. This one just combines all of them and it goes out everything like this, um.
You're doing a fine job.
Like this.
Okay, uh, there's a second on the floor, um.
I think Terry did, didn't you, Terry?
Uh, Vicky moved to approve it, Dan seconded.
Okay.
All's in favor of approve the bills? Being paid, alright.
It's a, yeah, it's a little confusing.
Hold it, alright.
It would be different if they would just let you, if they would just let you delete a transaction and go, okay, this never happened, here's what actually happened.
It used to be that way.
It would do that.
Yeah, yeah.
It would be a little bit more simple, but.
It would.
When you go in there, you're able to put a reason in why you're doing what you're doing, and then that way, when they come in and audit you, they can go, okay, why is this, and then you can show them the reason why.
I'm sorry.
Anything with government, anything, uh, anything you think makes sense, does not make sense.
Still makes sense.
I just, you know, when we have that kinda money going, I just, that's just the bookkeeper in me, cause I still call myself a bookkeeper, which is ancient, but anyway.
Okay, do we have, uh, Rhonda Allen here? Hey Rhonda, how are you doing?
Nice to meet you, now just put a face to there, um, and I don't know who everybody else is, but, um, my mom talked to, who'd you talk to?
Kim.
Kim.
Kim, okay, she talked to Kim about our water bill, apparently our water bill like tripled in last month. And we haven't done anything different, we haven't had any leaks, we haven't watered the garden, um, or anything like that, so. Do you have the bill up there, I have it.
I do, uh, so, um, for May, June and July, they were, uh, and, or June, July and August, they had eight thousand gallons used, eight thousand gallons used, seven thousand gallons used. And then September and October, they had eleven thousand and then twenty two thousand, so it jumped.
And we watered our garden June and July.
Yeah, we didn't water it.
But we haven't, I mean.
Did you guys use a meter?
No, they told us about the meter and I wanted to check on it, next year I will get that meter.
Yeah, she just told us the other day when I went in there to talk about it.
Okay.
I didn't talk to anybody, I'm just, um, it's in her name, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Oh, okay.
We're the gophers, we're the doers.
Hey.
So. Has there been any investigation, do you know?
I just, first one I heard about, was it she only run the meter?
I don't know how to tell you that, buddy, uh, the account number is the only thing I got, oh, no, I don't have that. This is the only thing she has printed out on.
Any running toilets?
No.
No, I didn't get a call, I saw, no idea.
No laves, no running toilets, nothing, no maintenance.
We did have a hydrant hose bib, um, leak on the basement there, but we got that done, that was back in June.
Okay.
Hmm.
And that leaked and we didn't, I didn't notice it till the next morning, so they've been doing it all night, I guess, I don't know, but it busted at a joint.
That would've affected your July bill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, that was way bad.
Again, that's when I was using hose bib there next to, that, uh, to water the garden, so I was turning it and moving it, so, I don't know if over time or whatever, maybe I just, too much of an armstrong trying to tighten it, I don't know.
We live right next door.
Um, so it does say that their bill for, the one that she just did today, billing today, uh, for usage on eleven eighteen has gone back down to seven thousand.
That's weird.
I don't know why it went, don't triple actually, yeah. I mean, cause in the summer, we were wa- watering the gardens, so we were using, we didn't know about the meter thing until the other day, she told us about it, so, um, but, so we were using more water in the summer than we are, have since, so.
That's odd.
So then August and September, eleven thousand gallons and twenty two thousand gallons, have you got, but that's the only thing you did, but you guys didn't have any, you guys didn't call and get anything fixed? Or?
Nope.
Anything like that?
There's not much you can do until it's investigated, so.
Okay, so you're gonna go out and look at it?
Cause you can't credit it till you know what happened.
Right, right.
You don't know if they have a, the meter?
Yeah, I have no idea.
So he can pull the meter data and see if it's at a certain time of day or?
Depending on, depending on the meter, we have multiple types of meters, if that's a newer, new enough meter, I'll be able to pull data on it. So we'll actually see what happened with the, what actually happened.
Okay.
And it should give us dates, but the meter might be the first generation, which won't have that, could be second one where I need to get in the meter.
The meter on the outside of the house or is it on the inside?
Inside, it's on the inside, so, yeah.
You got easy access to it, cause it's, you know, yeah.
Yeah, should be on the inside, I, I don't know what meter, what meter it is, it depends on what the numbers are.
Yeah, it's on the wall coming in. It's right there, next to the waters out there.
I'll have to get in and look at it.
Down in the basement.
That's the good stuff. But the only thing you can do is table their late fees at the moment, you know, for, so, or I guess move those back, but, did you figure out what's going on with it?
Um, yeah, I'm supportive of that, um, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Table the late fees until the investigation.
So you wanna delay their?
Bill, paying your bill, or I want?
Delay the, uh, the additional charges above what they normally pay, or delay their whole bill until next meeting? What do you think of that now?
Well, how you split it?
The only, the only thing I'm gonna tell you is right now it's gonna be tough, if it went back to normal, it's gonna be tough.
Yeah.
Unless it is a, unless it is the one five or the one eight meter, sorry, one five or the one four meter, I'll be able to pay it, but.
Generally, so how does, so how's it worked in the past when, cause I mean, they've had anybody come out with it gone back down, so how has that been handled in the past if there was no reason?
If nothing was discovered.
What would cause that, if we haven't had any leaks?
We just made, one lady pay, pay the bill cause we couldn't figure out what happened to it.
Yeah.
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 Cause the, the meters won't speed up, that's, I mean, people will sell off a meter, no, typically if a meter just goes bad, it slows down. It's got internal parts and Woodburn has hard water, so it slows that meter down typically. Um, very rarely will we see one's looks crazy, a lot of times it'll be, cause if we come in and change the head on it or something, we put the wrong codes in. Um, but if this one is a newer, our newer meter, which I don't know if it is or not, my new one's data log, every, every minute, every second of the day, it data logs what's going on with that meter, I can pull ninety days of data on it. Um, but then the previous generation for that, I have to be inside to hit the red button on there that I can follow it. So I just don't know which one you have, the one before that, I can't do anything with it at all, yeah.
Do you have also, but it, it was high and then it went back down, now it's at normal again.
Yeah.
Do you have a water softener?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
It's either a water softener stuck or a toilet stuck, one of the two, it's usually the biggest culprits of what goes on.
But either one will.
I don't think the water softeners, softeners suck.
If he, if he's able to pull the data, you'll be able to see it, cause it'll be pretty consistent, if you use it a lot, it'll be every four days or every five days, it'll have at nighttime, huge spike in it, and then everything else will be back down low, 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 huge spike.
For the softener?
Just like showers.
Yeah, you'll be able to see, cause it runs for two hours at a time and you can see that on the data, if, if the, if the, if it's a new one, yeah.
Almost they'll tell you about every time you shower, you laundry, just by the numbers.
But when we do that stuff, but it's not, it's not, it's not been anything, it's, it's not like we've been doing.
Right, no. No.
Turns more laundry or taking way more showers or whatever.
That's, that amount of extra water you use, that's not contributing anything extra, you guys did, it was something else that happened in the house that maybe someone, you just weren't aware of, I mean, could've been outside spigot that was left on and then someone just went and shut it off, could've been anything, I mean, it's a large amount of water to use.
Could the software cause that too?
Soft, yeah, we just, we just had one that was doing it, literally it was every three days, it was regenerating itself, but it was using almost a thousand gallons every time it did it, and, you know, we had it turned off and it went right back to normal. And, I mean, that's, that kinda thing could be happening, but before it go away, a lot of times it's not a software, it's a toilet that happened to be stuck open and running. And I don't, I don't know how many you have, if you have one you use very often, that's the way that sounds.
We have two, one upstairs went down and we use them regularly and so they, they haven't been running.
But the numbers you're, the numbers you're telling me, it was eleven thousand, then it went to seventeen?
Twenty two.
Twenty two, it's almost like it was a two week period or a week and a half period that it, something ran right between my read periods, and then it went, when it went away.
Were you on vacation in that time?
The only bad thing about things like that is if it goes down the drain, um, we can't, we can't credit it. If it's something like a toilet running or a, or water softener, um, because we still process it, you know?
It depends on where your softener discharges to.
Yeah.
If your softener discharges into a storm, then you're good.
Okay, yeah, it does.
Unless it's something goes to sanitary.
Which is another problem.
But, so it's something you'll check out?
Yeah, yeah, you're home, someone's easy there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, someone's easy there. Yeah, 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 I did work that.
And then what do we wanna do about the bill, then, just take off any late fees, have them pay it, and then they get credit back?
Where are they at right now?
I have no idea.
We don't even know what the late fees or anything?
Did, did you guys?
It is six hundred fifty one dollars.
Okay, did you pay the previous, or is that, is that the high bill?
No, I talked to her last week.
Cause this is, that's the twenty two thousand gallon, you guys paid the one before that, the eleven thousand gallons.
It's been all paid on time.
Okay, yeah, I didn't. I mean, I, what I would say on this one is, I mean.
Wait till you investigate it?
We've got plenty of time till this, I mean, I guess this one would be technically late now.
It'll be a three week.
It's late right now, yeah, their one from ten seventeen is due now.
Okay, so pending investigation, let's waive the wait fee, late fee on this one. Um, if you can find something that points that it went discharged into the storm.
Yeah.
Then we can look at the credit, and if you can't find anything, or if you do figure out that it did go down the drain, then unfortunately, there's nothing we can do really for it. But, in the meantime, we'll waive the late fee on this one since the meeting fell after the due date, and you did talk to Kim, so.
Are we?
That's, that would be my suggestion.
Am I okay to go ahead and adjust it if I do find something, or do we need to bring it back here?
I'll go ahead and add that to the, to the motion that.
If we, if I do find something, it didn't go down the sanitary.
We can make, we can make our standard sewer deduct, or our sewer credit and move on.
Okay. For both, for, are you, for both months, is that alright? They have one for eleven and one for twenty two thousand?
Yeah.
We can adjust both months?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so if we do find something that is positive for you guys, then we'll make the adjustment, and if we don't, there's unfortunately not much we can do for you.
So y'all will let us know either way, like?
We'll have Kim, we'll have Kim call you back.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be down tomorrow, I'll be in tomorrow then, I'll stop over, I don't know what time, nine o'clock or something.
I've got a dog's appointment later, not nine, so I'll.
I'm coming, I can come later and after, later too, if need be, right, tomorrow's Tuesday?
Yes.
It's a bad way to hour, forgot, so, yeah.
Whatever, yeah.
So, so you guys could hold off on paying the bill that's due, that was due, and you should have got a new bill today, or in a couple days here, today, tomorrow. You should get a new bill, so you can hold off paying last month's bill, we'll waive the late fee for that pending this, and then if you find something that will adjust. We'll give you a new, a new number that's due for last month and the one that's due now, give you a brand new total that you can pay for the, for both months. That won't be due until December.
My water softener.
Okay, so.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we have a second.
Yes.
It just sits there.
All's in favor to, that, yeah. The leeway?
Yeah.
That's it. All right, hopefully we find something.
All right, thank you.
I'll be wanting to find it, um, you know, we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you so much.
Are leaving, this is funny, I like watching.
This is funny.
Like comedy center when I walk in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What were you guys doing?
Every night.
In town, George, Jerrits or something?
Lived in Nebraska prior to moving here, and I lived in a town, a village of four hundred and fifty people.
Yeah.
So everybody knew everybody at the grocery stores they had in town. And I, it was such a small town, I didn't have, I had like two dollars short on my bill, I said, well, go take the shaving cream off, she said, sign the back of the ticket. I didn't understand that, she said, sign the back of the receipt, and when you have the money, you gonna pay it. Next day, I was so worried about that, the next day I went and paid it, went to the bank and paid it.
Wow.
And it was only like fifteen bucks.
Yeah, yeah.
Still, I like small towns, I love them.
Thank you for coming here.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am. I'm coming.
We got one more sewer adjustment thing?
Oh, we do?
Tim Miller?
Yeah, uh, Kim said that they wouldn't be here.
Which one's that one?
They had the broken water line in their foundation, the cap laying in the spot on the ground. So these people, they had, um, I'll just read what Kim wrote, uh, phone call from Emily Miller, asked for copies of the last four utility bills, they had a broken water line in their foundation, it's been repaired. Um, it didn't go down the sewer line. Uh, I guess that in their, yeah, they had a sewer line by their foundation, or they had the utility line by their foundation, it was the hot water. The water would collect there, so the cap kept laying down in a certain spot, whatever in the living room or whatever, and she said she couldn't figure out why. And then the water bill was going up, with the water, the hot water was in that spot pouring out, so the cap laid there.
It was warm.
To, to warm up.
Wow, that makes sense.
Well, they called somebody in to find it, but the league didn't know that.
Their average was eight thousand a month previously, and then for September, October. And November, they had eleven thousand, seventeen thousand, ten thousand used. Um, all total for three months was over fourteen, was fourteen thousand gallons, which would be a two hundred and fifty-four dollar and sixty-six, uh, cent credit. For them, for those three months.
So we need to approve that?
That one did not go down the sewer.
Oh, it didn't?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll move that we make our standard sewer adjustment.
Yeah, I second.
All's in favor? All right, that's everybody.
Yeah, that one wasn't investigated already.
Whatever happened to that one that was out?
They were found anyway.
Really? Didn't they have a big bill too?
Did she pay it?
Did she?
Or is paying, I should say, maybe, maybe is a better word?
Uh, we gotta pay, these are one, sorry.
All right, the, uh, the new ordinances. First one amending the Woodburn Municipal Code. To establish, uh, non, non-sufficient funds fee. I think you said the, the main, well. I'll wait for somebody to, uh, ask for it to be read.
So moved.
Ask to read ordinance, okay.
Second, sorry.
All right, all in favor to read the ordinance two, four, one, four, two, six?
In full? Know what you're gonna do?
In full, Terry?
Do we need to? I think we just have that one section, don't we, can we read that?
Title only?
Title.
And maybe you can give a, a brief description as to why, at, with, after you read the title?
Yeah.
Okay?
All in favor?
Yeah. All right, that's everybody.
Ten dollars.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash fourteen twenty-six, and ordinance amending Woodburn Municipal Code, Title Three, Chapter Thirty-three, Section Thirty-three dot ten. To establish a general non-sufficient funds fee. Um, this is for anybody who has a return check. Or, um, any sort of return payment to the city via their utility bill, that they are charged a ten dollar fee plus. Uh, whatever the, uh, financial institution charges us. So this is a low fee. Not meant to generate income or do anything like that, it's just a low fee for our time to, um, process any, any return payments. Plus anything that invoice cloud or any bank, uh, levies against us. Uh, purposely made it very low as to not. You know, cause any, cause any commotion, it's, it's a very low fee, we get charged by invoice cloud fifteen dollars to, for any return checks that people send to make their utility payments. Um, right now, we don't have anything in place to. I'm sorry, let me back up, we have a non-sufficient check ordinance right now, that doesn't cover, um. Electronic transfers or any, anything that's outside of a check, so this will pretty much, this will just add in all of that.
So we're getting covered then?
Yeah, so then that way, if someone returns a check, or if the bank, right now the bank doesn't charge us a fee, but if we, we move banks or the bank policy changes. And they charge us thirty-seven fifty, we're covered, if invoice cloud update, or up, ups their charge, we don't have to revisit this. It's a flat ten dollar fee plus whatever it takes for, whatever we're charged.
Okay.
So.
Okay. I move to approve the ordinance twenty-four dash fourteen twenty-six.
I believe you have to move to accept the reading first.
Yep.
I'm sorry. I move to accept the reading on the ordinance twenty-four dash fourteen twenty-six.
Second.
All's in favor, raise your hand. Okay, that's everybody, accepts the reading?
Dean, was that a second?
Yeah.
We will, we, we will, uh, read these two and then adopt at the next meeting.
Okay.
If you'd like to adopt them now, we can.
I didn't, I, I, I think Joe had mentioned that we can, uh, vote to step, sidestep it and then.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, we can vote to suspend the rules if we have a unanimous vote.
But we have a meeting in two weeks, I don't think it's.
Okay.
If it's too big of a deal.
I mean, if you want to back on the agenda, we'll put it back on the agenda.
It's up to you, if you wanna move to do it, I can't stop you.
All right.
Well, I think we should move and get it our way.
Well, in that case, I'll move to suspend the rules and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
All's in favor to suspend the rules and adopt the ordinance? Raise your hand, okay, that's everybody.
I cannot stop you guys from doing anything. I am. Huh? So that's to, you, to suspend it, that doesn't have to be a second one to adopt, it's just suspend and adopt all in one?
The rules are you have reading first.
It's a combination motion.
Yeah, yeah.
As long as you read the motion, and we accept the reading, then we can move to suspend the rules and adopt the ordinance.
Amazing.
Yeah, I didn't know that either, learn something every day, don't we?
Okay.
And. That's how we do it in Woodburn.
Uh, there you go.
In that case.
We don't mess around.
Pass it on down?
Minutes, or this is?
No, that's, that's about.
Get the send that down, I think, guys, this is a warrant.
I think I passed notes back to you, didn't I?
Uh, the minutes, yeah, I mean the warrants.
The warrants?
Did they sign?
Oh, was this it?
Yeah, sorry.
That was my bad.
They didn't sign it, yeah. Down here. That's the warrant, dude, but that's my copy, it's your copy.
Getting all the shit in this though.
The messy.
That needs to go down too.
And this one too. No, no, Joe, that's your everybody, that's just your copy.
Very good.
Okay.
It's why we stopped doing paper.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Paperless society.
I can start sending them on, um, DocuSigns, you guys want?
Ready for the next?
The next one, no?
Ordinance one, two, four, one, four, two, seven.
Yeah. I move to read by title only.
Second.
Second.
John got the second, I think.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Cut it up, all in favor? It's my line, damn it.
Uh-oh, we're on TV, you know?
Yeah, I know, I, I said more cuss words on YouTube than I have before we run YouTube.
Ordinance number two, four, dash, one, four, two, seven, ordinance regarding the control, care, and disposition of animals in Woodburn, Indiana.
I move to accept the reading.
Second.
All's in favor to accept the reading, raise your hand. That's everybody.
You have a lot accomplished here. Of course, Dog Man's getting ready to move, so.
That's okay, there's gonna be another Dog Man.
Oh, I know.
So do we communicate this to the city somehow?
Yeah, how do we, yeah, I'd like to know that myself, and how do we collect the money?
Let's finish up with this first, if we're gonna suspend the rules and adopt this one as well.
Oh, okay.
We'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
To.
Suspend.
Just to suspend the rules and not.
Second.
All's in favor, raise your hand?
All in favor?
That one's yours as well.
Luckily, there's section one, subsection three in there, otherwise I'd have been it now.
You want to find that now, you want to?
What?
So again, since we have discussion, how do we, how do we communicate?
Yes, I'd like to know myself.
Yeah.
Put on the website?
How's the city gonna know that we have an ordinance now, cause that does need to be out there, cause I know we're not the only ones.
Start writing tickets.
Okay, and that was my question, so where's the money gonna go to the treasurer, right?
Right into my pocket?
Yeah, no.
Oh. Can we get a second on that?
You wish.
We got a vote on that.
We would like to divvy that up too. Um, no, seriously.
You run for US Congress or what?
Um, we will have to set up the, um, collection bureau if we want to collect any fines for city ordinance violations in-house. I'm not sure, I haven't talked to Kevin about what that entails, or what we have to do, or cost, um, anything on that process. I think that now that it's adopted, Brad can enforce, or Brad has something to at least lean on and say, this is what the ordinance is.
And then I say, well, I didn't know that.
And ignorance of the law is not an excuse.
Oh, there, oh, my goodness, I did that, okay.
So what's the next step, we have to record this with? Just ourselves?
That.
Or with the courts of Allen County?
No, no.
Courts of Allen County cannot enforce city ordinance rules.
Yeah, so, um, if, if, uh, it does go to court, we have to have somebody representing Woodburn. The reason why they've gotten thrown out before is because we didn't send somebody representing Woodburn.
Okay. No one to?
Try to be a lawyer or something?
We need a prosecutor.
The inter-prosecutor.
But we don't want.
So a hundred dollar fine by the time we pay a hundred fifty an hour for the attorney?
That's just for you, man.
Yeah, you lost me.
Yes, we have to pay the lawyer to go prosecute the ticket.
Yeah, that would not be good, we don't wanna have to do that, that's gonna cost us more money than the fine.
Well, the ordinance, I mean, something like this, uh, first or second time, yeah, might get thrown out, but once you get up to a five hundred dollar. You know, a fifty and a hundred dollar ticket might not be worth it, but a five hundred dollar ticket might be worth it. And not only that, but I'm pretty sure once we set up the, uh, collection bureau, that we can collect fines here, and it won't go to court. They can pay the fine and it would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so you have no idea what the procedures is, setting that up?
No, when Kevin came in here and told all of us.
Will you follow up with that, with us on that?
Set that in force now, a lot of people might think second.
Exactly.
Letting the dogs go.
Run wild.
You think we'll send a notice with the water bill or something? I don't think too many people are gonna.
Yeah, I, I'm wondering too, how do we get this out?
People aren't gonna look at the website.
We don't really have, other than families of Woodburn, which I know a lot of people do, read that on Facebook, Facebook.
Facebook. But how may I earn that?
Right.
And people aren't gonna look at the website and say, well, I mean, a few might, but.
What about, what about the first one you just did?
Why don't we have, do we have signs up anywhere?
I'd do, just put it the same way you always do.
Just say dogs have to be unleashed.
Put it in the paper.
Put it in the paper, the local paper, and put it online and be done with it.
Let's not put any more signs up.
Yeah, it's, it's the, it's on the owners of the.
Signs are a blight, this is.
At least give them no, you know, notice.
And Brad doesn't go out the first time he sees it, hey, there's new ordinance here, here's the ordinance.
Yeah.
Leash them.
Yeah.
You don't have to go hammer.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, go hammer the guy the first time they, if they're not.
Right, right, that's a warning, they get a warning first.
Right.
I trust the police department to handle it in the proper way.
Yeah.
No, he's gotta go back there again for the same reason, after he's given them the ordinance, then that's a different story, you know?
Right.
He can have that ordinance on hand, hand to him, if you have questions, online, go look up, here's your ordinance number, are you violating it?
That sounds good.
Yeah.
I mean, otherwise you have time, you guys do an order, so you, why'd you do it for that one, not for the rest of them?
Right, that's true.
Yeah.
Well, that was Kevin, that was Kevin's whole point, was that make, make the ordinance what it is, and then let Brad use his discretion about how to enforce that.
I feel like your bureau's a good idea, where you guys collect some of the money here.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we could get that.
Just gotta figure out what that entails and all that stuff.
That'll slow people down.
I'm assuming it's a new courthouse.
Well, I think it's like, it's like, it's a three-person board or whatever, is that the way you described it, and it's like, once a month or well, that they kind of come in there, they go pay fine. They wanna just pay and it's over with, but they wanna contest them, I thought that's the way you described it, so.
Yeah. Well, I think he's, I think there was something in there that other places had ordinances that if the fine isn't paid, that's an ordinance violation, so you can.
If it goes to court, then that violation is enough to pay for the attorney to go to court.
Yeah, so we can set the, the violation of the ordinance of not paying the fine to be something to cover our cause. It's not like it would matter, cause if they got there, the judge could say, I think that's too much, you don't have to pay that much, but.
Or the judge can say, why didn't you pay this and waste my time?
Yeah. So.
That's true.
Uh, but setting up that bureau, I, I don't know what it entails or how long or how much or. Uh, but setting up that bureau, I, I don't know what it entails, or how long, or how much, or.
Once we find that out, we'll figure out what to do now, I guess. Cross that bridge. Sounds good. Thanks for doing all that and getting it done.
Yeah.
Yep.
The way I would assume it would work is you set that up, you have some sort of online system that people can pay, and keep track of violations and who's paid and who hasn't paid and stuff like that, so I'm sure it's gonna cost. Just so you guys are all aware, if we come back and software costs ten grand to set something up, or when the lawyer bill comes in, it's not gonna be free, you know, it's not like it's a volunteer organization, it's gonna cost us money, I'm assuming. So, but we have to have some way to.
I hope it's reasonable.
Something to enforce the laws, and I think it's absolutely necessary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. Since we don't have a court system here.
Are, are we, are we done with the conversation?
I believe so, alright.
Gene.
Yes. Um, we're coming up to get ready to advertise in the local newspapers, um, for Santa, and also, we're doing a, um, Marty Shanks has, has, um, done a, he's calling it a holiday picnic basket, so we're gonna have a drawing for that too. So we need money for the newspaper advertising, so I wanted to check and like, do we, do I just bring the bills in and give them to him? Or do I need to ask you, will you guys pay for our advertising for our holiday programs or?
How's it been done in the past?
Um, we didn't do any pictures, and we didn't ask to have it in more than once a week, so we didn't get charged. Um, West Bend has already told me they're gonna charge me an extra twenty dollars to keep their ad in about our drawings for the gift basket for two weeks. Your company paid for our advertising for Santa last year.
Oh, wow.
Now, we didn't have a full fee for it, because I did the flyer, but our committee decided they want West Bend to design the, the, so it could be over a hundred and some dollars for the, the Santa ad.
I think that you guys had approved, you guys are probably, you guys might remember, I thought you guys had approved.
See, that's what I'm not sure of, what all.
Yeah, we.
That's for twenty twenty-five though.
Yeah, they, that, nothing was approved.
For this year.
I don't know if there was a date set in or not, I don't know.
We put it in twenty twenty-five's budget, so I mean.
That's why I'm asking, cause I don't know exactly how.
Yeah, not just, if you guys want to help, I'll pay for it, that's more the question. I don't know where your guys is, you guys have that fund in there, but I don't know what that's set in at.
Yeah, the promotion.
The promotion funds, I don't know if you still got money left in there or not, I guess that's the question to be asked. If you guys.
See, if you come to our meetings, you could help us out.
Busy. I try.
So you've had, um, the community help you out in the past, is what you're saying? Like you just mentioned Joe's business, or, you know, what, and now his wife?
No, we didn't, we didn't do anything that cost us money, so we don't put pictures in, or the whole flyer in, and we just make it a news announcement, then we don't get charged, and that's what we've been doing.
And this is dealing with, also with the struc, the statute too, right?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
It's also with the New Island Lions, the statue down there too, is what their Christmas special, they have going on.
That's right.
There is a convoy out to their, 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 for this year, so.
Well, then we should take care of that.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's, it's bigger promotion for Woodburn too, so I think I, I would support, you know, the council taking care of.
Yeah, that kinda costs.
Yeah.
I think so.
Thank you.
I do.
We just gone the cheap way all the time.
Yeah.
This one's different than their normal, their normal one that they do, it's a, it's a bigger one.
Well, and we've never done a holiday basket before, and Marty has been nice enough that he's donating everything that goes into this basket, and the businesses are donating gift certificates to go in with the.
That's nice.
It's a nice basket.
Yeah, that's.
He saw the picture.
So our ceremony, is it gonna be at the monument?
Yeah, it should be in the basket, they'll be there. You can still put your name in then too for it.
Do we have a P A system? Okay. Do we have a P A system, audio system set up?
I don't have that audio system. Does the city?
Do we have one?
We don't have one.
We don't?
City doesn't have one, no.
Um.
That must be tough.
What, the papers, whenever we put something in the papers, they just don't run it, and then they just send us an invoice.
Well, I just told, I just had them mail it to my address today, when they said they were gonna charge me, so that's the other thing. Do I have it sent to you guys, or do they send it to me and I just bring them into you and?
Yeah, if you wanna do that, if you just wanna bring them in, then we'll pay them directly.
Yeah, pay it directly, yeah.
Okay, well, I just didn't know, so. I was surprised they'd even put the picture in for free one time, so, cause usually a picture of anything, they charge you, so.
I don't know if you guys will have to approve anything like that, it's gonna get paid in the warrants, and you guys approved the warrants, so I don't know if the next year.
Yeah, it's more on you guys' knowledge, it's, there's gonna be a bill coming, it's, it's in the, it's.
Okay.
I mean, I can always leave a note in your mail, but I'll take something about.
If you just wanna drop the bill off to Kevin, then we'll pay Wes, whoever it was, we'll pay him directly.
It's just West Bend and, uh, New Allen, or the, you know, East Allen, you're clear, so.
Then next year, you'll be in the budget for it.
Right. But I didn't know how I was like wanting to do it this time, so I figured I'd better ask questions.
Cause I think la, or, when you, when we came in before, I think that they had approved a thousand for next year, so we'll keep track of that somehow and.
Okay.
Go throughout the year, so you have a good idea, and then I can give you an update whenever something comes off with the balance of, and then that way you can.
But do you want her to receive the bills all the time, or should they come to the city?
I don't, yeah, it's, I, I would prefer, uh, the city should pay the places directly, I don't care if you have them send it directly here, or if you wanna have them send it to you and bring it in, but as long as we're paying a check out to them directly.
Right.
Is the way, you should try to, you know.
Well, I figured I'd just bring it in and leave it for you.
Yeah. I don't mind if it's sent to you and then you bring it in, but as long as it's paid to them directly.
Okay.
And also, I mean, we talked about the bows too, you know, if you're gonna order something, come on in, we can order it, and I'll pay for it right then and there.
Right.
That way.
Now that we know how to order them. Again, if you'd been at the meeting and you were told this, right? That you have an account with this company.
I missed the last two.
You're in trouble.
It's like you're tough, I've been swamped.
I like the word where she, she receives the bills and then brings them in, there, there's an interaction there. And it will prevent them from just getting lumped in with another.
I was gonna say.
Another thing that might be similar to something that we're expecting anyhow and get missed.
I thought it'd be just some work for me, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Well, we have applied for our five oh one C three, we are incorporated now, and so we're just waiting to see, hear back from the government.
Yay, good news.
So, apparently there's a easy form for a five oh one C three now, and so.
Very good.
Um, we have filed all that in, so we're just waiting.
Does that make you guys like tact and sound?
Yes.
Yeah, it's chairman of the organization.
Awesome.
Yeah. Which, that's why we got kicked out of the state main street program, cause we didn't have a five oh one C three.
Yeah.
But anyhow, I won't have to spend a day trying to file my yearly report, it's in this way anyhow.
You didn't have to pay any fees to do that, did you?
Yes.
Oh, you did?
Um, to file for a five oh one C three, yeah.
Shouldn't we pay for that?
Two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
No, it's their organization.
Oh.
It's not our.
So you have funds, you have, um.
We have some funds.
Yeah, not, not much.
Yeah, okay.
Um, our funds have come from. We've had, we've done, um, like, little.
The barbecue hamburgers?
Cookouts and things, and we take donations in.
I was gonna, I wa, I was wondering, so that's how you get your money, is you just?
That's the only way we get it.
Okay.
Now, some people will be more willing to donate to us once we get the five oh one C three.
Right.
So you get hate.
Write it off.
You get help from all the, the businesses.
Right.
Okay.
Most of them are very, very generous, so.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, the Mother's Day stuff was all from businesses, and both part, very minor expenses.
Um, we had one person, um, donate anonymously to pay for the animals to come visit, cause that was like two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, to have all the entertainment was five or six hundred dollars.
You can get some dogs free.
I don't think anybody wants to see dogs, so.
Not them all.
That's up early.
Found them up.
Yeah, yeah.
Of course, we'll be looking into what we wanna do for entertainment for Mother's Day too, again, so.
Pay a burger man.
Tag art seems to have reasonable prices and nice stuff, but I don't know what other entertainment. Somebody said we need something more directed toward the mothers, and it's like, well, the mothers are happy if there's something for the kids to do, so I don't know. We're always open to suggestions for these things, so.
Appreciate your hard work.
We try, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
So, what, did we settle on?
We're just gonna wait till the bill comes through, and just approve it.
Yeah.
With the warrants, that's good.
Okay.
Prove with fables?
Yeah.
Okay. Awesome.
Alright, that's all I wanted to make sure that we were doing the billing and the paperwork right for this, so. We appreciate you guys being willing to help us with this, so.
Appreciate your work.
Yeah.
We were hoping that eventually, maybe, some of the businesses, we could give them to, like, with the, when you had a chamber, you paid a certain amount each year to support the chamber, that maybe they, when we have a five oh one C three, that maybe some of them would.
They can write it off, then.
Yeah, that would donate to our group, so. We're just waiting for, we get all our paperwork done, so. We feel bad that there's no chamber, so we kinda felt like we should do some of the things that change need to do.
Well, change might happen.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
And I saw you got a lot of good advertisement for your pumpkin this year too, at your business, so.
Yeah, we, well, hey, you know, I should've, uh, made an executive decision and knocked the police department out, you know.
They sure did blow everybody out of the, out of the, the whole competition, so.
That was good, that was good.
Yeah, it was.
Of course, the discussion has been like, are you allowed to use more than the pumpkin that was donated to you, yeah? So I don't care, you can, if you wanna pay for more pumpkins to put on.
You just have to use the pumpkin here?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, we didn't specify, so we couldn't throw them out, because I used more of the pumpkin we gave out, so.
Did you see yours?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was real cute.
I don't remember that one.
It's an actual, he actually cut out a door, put the actual latch in.
Yeah, just like would be a baby box.
Oh, cute.
And you had a little baby in the inside.
Yeah, it was a little tiny baby in the pumpkin. It was real cute.
I'll wait to talk to the. It was good, it was good.
See, I guess if you would put it in your window in the front of your building, maybe, so everybody could see.
Yeah, I, I tossed, I tossed it today, cause it was all mushy, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, pumpkins don't last very long.
No, not when you cut them, but that was a great way to do it, it was really cute.
I, I leave it up to the people there, you know, people, they, they all come up with the idea, and it was, it was great, yeah.
Yeah, wow, that sounds really good.
Well, we had, took several different photos to try to get it all in, and so you could see the baby in, that the door opened.
Get it, yeah.
We always, you know, hey, it's the company's pumpkin, so if you want me to, I take the picture, then they look at it and go, balance changes, and so we take another picture.
The problem is, we got a topic next year.
There you go.
Yep.
Well, maybe you get a bigger pumpkin, and then we could easily get the door on it easier, or something.
Yeah, right.
It was a pretty good sized pumpkin to start with.
Yeah.
Did you get to pick the sizes, or they tell you what you, cause we're all like, wow, did Ryan pick, cause they were bigger pumpkins.
Well, I picked all, I picked all the pumpkins out, but they were like, these two baskets here, I was like, okay, and they were all, they were all huge.
Yeah, everybody's like, we've never got pumpkins this big before.
They were all big pumpkins.
Good job.
So, yeah, we had a good time with everybody.
Oh, yeah, I think, I think we all did, yep. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Okay, uh, next, a couple things I wanted to talk about, um, I, I printed off the picture, uh, a picture, listen to me, I'm still old fashioned, threw out a picture. Uh, a map of Woodburn, um, so, uh, regarding annexation, uh, I hear a sigh next to me, uh, the gray area is where we have one hundred percent signatures, um, for annexation, okay? Uh, the green areas are people that have signed, but they're, they were signed later, after the fact, uh, after we already had this map drawn out. So, we don't have one hundred percent of the people in the area have signed, so it would be considered a voluntary annexation, not a super voluntary. The process for a voluntary annex, annexation would probably run through a good portion of twenty twenty-five, before it's finalized. Any of the people who haven't signed have a chance to remonstrate, and if they remonstrate against it, and they win, um, the entire annexation will have to get thrown out and let it start all over again, you know?
Oh, gosh.
What's the chance of that?
Yeah.
Uh, probably not much, but, um, there's a couple different things I, I wanna talk about, um. So, the Schmucker property is in there, um, I wanna get that finalized before he starts selling parcels. However, we can do, we can do, um, uh, annexation waivers. So, anybody that wants to hook up to sewer, we can tell them they can't hook up unless they sign an annexation waiver inside there, um. We can do it that way, I don't know how that looks if, if, um, he starts selling parcels while we're already in the middle of an annexation with just the solid, the one big parcel, um. My thoughts are taking the property that's a hundred percent and annexing it in, be a ninety day process, we start that, um.
That way you can start building houses, so.
Yeah, maybe the gray area and the one green, uh, parcel there that's highlighted in green, that's signed also, that's contiguous. If we did, if we did the other green ones, it would, you know, it would take away some of the contiguous property if this area was to get annexed in the future. So my proposal is to annex the entire gray area and the green, the one green parcel that's, uh, to the south there. Um, and the petition can be redone to make that all one hundred percent, we just have to have Baker Tilly redo the, um, the, uh, fiscal study, which basically means they just rewrite the report, knocking out the other properties. Or we can move forward with, um, the voluntary annexation with all the properties, it would just take a lot longer.
How long do you think it'd take? Most of the year, you said?
He said, well into twenty twenty-five, which is probably, you know, gonna be, you probably have to have, I think you have to have like six, six public hearings or something.
So he couldn't start building or anything, too, or could he?
Uh.
Should be.
Well.
No, they are.
Okay. So what are the gray?
If we get it super, if we do the, the super voluntary, and it gets done within ninety days and he hasn't built anything yet, we don't have to do, there's no worries.
So we don't have anybody find it right now?
He could just go ahead and sell, he can go ahead and build, no, no problem.
We do.
We actually had, we actually had, uh, NDOT sort of worked in our favor.
Yeah.
Because the, uh, entranceway to that, that, uh, new addition, um.
Isn't this where we're at, I mean, uh?
NDOT didn't have the proper drawings for the entranceway, the grade and everything, so, uh.
Oh.
Paul called me back and he said he's not gonna have the reports into NDOT in time, he's probably not gonna start building until spring anyway. So that kinda gives us a little bit more time to be super voluntary, get it all in there.
Hmm.
Now, isn't there some kind of a limitation if we don't annex some of this, we're, we're limited, we're, we can't do it in the future?
So, if, if you're not touching contiguous property, if, if you're, if you're annexing off of newly annexed property, but if we, like I say, if we don't take those, that, that small little C looking thing, um, that, then we would have lots more contiguous, contiguous property to annex against. I fully intend to, um, increase the sewer by fifteen percent to the people outside the city, so that's gonna be, um, that's on the project list this year. I already signed the agreement with FSG to do that study, so we are moving forward with a sewer increase of people outside the city at fifteen percent. I would take all of his, all of their amenities away from him too. No burn pile, no brush pile, take the other bit of it. Oh, yeah, they're, they're, they won't be in the city, there won't be a lot of people doing that stuff. But, well, I can tell they do. Yeah. Although I've been told they don't. I, I know they do. Yeah, I know, I know.
Do they have to be let in there, or are there allowed, or?
The gates open, but it's illegal dumping then.
Yeah.
We have an ordinance for that?
Brad just took a little time for it.
Okay. So it's probably something that we'll have to be made aware of, you have to keep an eye on, so people can.
So we could come later and get re-annexed, since they are contiguous, so.
Yes, we could do, uh, that rule that I said is only for municipally, um, initiated annexation. If somebody wants to come in and voluntarily annex, that doesn't matter.
Okay, they can, yeah.
I wanted to get the council's opinion, yes, no, maybe so.
So these other two, I got them signed, what are we gonna, what are we gonna think if they're not gonna be in, hey, I'm willing to go in, I'll get them, you know, they seem to be okay with it.
Yeah.
Very good with it.
The, the only, my only thoughts are not include them in this time, because that way we don't take away contiguous property for future annexation.
Okay.
And we'll just have to get them to resign again, if we do a new one.
It's turned about like that way.
Oh, those, those one, two, three, four.
It's, it's.
Eight properties, eight, eight to ten properties be on an island then. Yes, the, yes. They'll be surrounded by the city. This would all be an island, yep. They'll be surrounded by the city. Sure would.
You could pick off those two, you could pick that one off, you could pick the rest of that green off, in there, right, cause you go on the ground. Behind it's already in the city, right?
Yes, that's all in the city, so I, I would take this one.
Yeah.
But not, but not these ones. And that way we'd have all contiguous property right there.
We just, we're setting off the map.
That'd be city too.
That's in the city already, yeah.
Or, yeah, that's out there, okay.
That's in the city already, yeah.
That way we have, what, a hundred percent, super voluntary, is what you're saying?
And it doesn't take much.
If all of them wanted a super voluntary, it doesn't matter where it's at, if they all eight decide, okay, we all wanna join in, it wouldn't matter. It only matters if you do another voluntary down the line, if it matters of what property is touching the original city line.
If we want to initiate it.
Yes, but if they all decide in two years, okay, we all talked, we're all good to move in on it, it doesn't matter.
Right, voluntary, yeah.
Super voluntary.
Yeah.
So that be, um, Parker's job then to. Tell those people they can't be a part of certain things that are, that the city's not gonna cover anymore for them?
They shouldn't have been doing it now.
Right.
I mean, they know they should.
Is that being enforced though? We don't know.
What hap- what happened, I mean, we let people outside the city in there all the time.
It's a case by case basis, if you see somebody.
Tablewood comes in there, and they dump it there, because they were, it's always been, they're part of our.
Community.
Community, we always just let it go. Now these people are being stubborn.
What we.
They don't wanna be part of the community.
So they're the ones that are fighting us on this, annexation?
Yeah, those ones that didn't sign off.
These ones that aren't.
Those ones.
I know, but I cannot, it's been very clear to me, so I don't.
So all this gray is everyone who's signed, and greens who's signed.
The ones that aren't.
That have not signed, they will, they do not sign.
Who are those, is that Ravenwood?
No, it's the first, it's the homes, soon as you get past the field, there were the new additions in, it's those homes right there.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh. Hmm.
I was told if they can hold it off an extra three months, that they won't have to pay the higher tax for three more months. That's what I was told. That's why they don't wanna sign.
They wanna hold off paying more taxes as soon as possible, and they, uh, but that's not news, I mean, they came in here and they said.
We didn't talk to all of them, but.
They, they made it perfectly clear what their intentions were.
They're holding off as long as possible, that we have to pay more taxes.
No.
Even though it was kind of a wash again.
Well, they're eventually gonna have to do this, correct?
Well, yes, but I don't know, we're about, five years from now, you can take it on it, please take them.
It's in their rears anyway, they got a year down the road for you to annex them, so.
They go up fifteen percent, they'll wish they came in.
Yeah.
Uh, the sewer is going up.
Yeah, they'll wish they came in.
I want that in minutes too, initiating a higher sewer rate for outside the city residents.
Oh.
And, and a hydrant fee as well, yeah, those will both be added to people who, right now, people outside the city don't pay a hydrant fee.
So it's really all those people along there that have those beautiful homes that are, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
They'll get, they'll get a hydrant fee too, that's a water, watering up too.
Do we have to sign it?
Yeah, right now they don't have a hydrant fee, do they?
Township pays.
Just a discussion. Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, otherwise there's incentive to build a house and not be so alone.
At least this township pays their hydrant.
Correct, correct, yeah, he won't have it anymore, you're switching it over.
Jeff told me he doesn't care either way, if we do it the other way, he doesn't care, so. And I, I, I wanna commend Jeff for continuing to pay, or I should say mommy township for continuing to pay their fees.
From what I, there's multiple counties that have not paid, it's not just the one that we have a problem with, it's other townships.
Areas have problems with that.
Other townships have not paid as well, I think there's two or three other ones that also.
Oh, yeah, New Haven's dealing with that at a hundred times multitude, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I mean, they're only paying out there.
Well, but Havenwood paid it all before, and when it switched, they, they decided to pay in the outskirts, and have to count, and they. Havenwood always paid it before, but the whole fire department switched, it was switched over.
So you're saying.
Can we, can we draw this back to the annexation su- uh, subject first? I, I wanna just move forward with annexing super, doing a super voluntary annexation with the gray and the one green parcel.
Okay.
Okay.
Agree?
Agreed.
Okay, yes, alright, okay, now we can continue with that.
Well, I, I, no, I was just wondering, so if Havenwood is not Ravenwood, Havenwood is it? What is it, Raven?
Havenwood.
Haven, um, what do we offer them right now? Do they get, uh.
Water, sewer.
And that's it, they don't get the.
You don't offer them anything, yeah.
Garbage pickup or anything, okay.
Only people in the city who get, so.
So that's why they don't wanna be any part of the.
Havenwood's not part of this conversation.
Yeah, this is not Havenwood at all.
Oh.
Havenwood is a.
Why aren't they?
They're too far outside, we don't have a contingency to them.
Oh.
Havenwood's way over there.
They're west of the high.
There's Woodburn, there's Havenwood.
Yeah, I know where they're at, I just didn't know why, cause I remember that guy coming in complaining and.
Yeah, about the hydrant out there, we got a hydrant subject, what about, what about that little green one right there?
That's Repway's property.
That, that's not one little green one, that, their property goes all the way down.
Oh.
And the next one below it, yeah.
They have that small strip right there and that, and then the second parcel is the other small rectangular thing.
Oh, that's theirs too, oh, it's that whole thing there, okay, that's honestly, you can get the little parcel there, you gotta all button up there.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Well, what you're proposing too, raise the rates for Havenwood though, wouldn't it?
Mm-hmm, yeah, sure will, fifteen percent.
Right.
Okay, so.
So.
Yeah.
Alright.
And they'll, and they'll get a fire hydrant rental fee out there too then.
Oh.
Yep.
Cause right now, they, that, that township does not pay for it.
And then we're gonna, probably, it's gonna hit the fan after that, right, they'll all be in here yelling, screaming at us?
Well, they want it, cause they want the fire hydrant fixed, we gotta fix that fire hydrant out there.
Oh.
You got a broken hydrant out there that's been for almost a year and a half now.
What would happen if there's a fire?
You don't use that hydrant.
There's another one that's, that's close to it.
Okay.
They've been paid to have it rep, that.
You gotta remember, hey, I haven't lived in this town before, so I don't know all these little details.
But you don't.
I have to ask questions.
East Central, no, but Titans are now, just so that's.
Oh, yeah.
They're tagged on it, they, they know it's down there, yeah, they know it's down.
The hydrant fees is, they used to pay themselves, then the fire territory took over, and township is supposed to pay it. The guy, township trustee, Hugh refuses to pay for the fire hydrants, we're not replacing the fire hydrant, because.
They won't pay for it, okay.
They haven't paid for the yearly, for two years, or three years, I think, the other one.
Really?
Uh, the fi- the territory paid for it for one year, so they're two years behind, creep twenty-three and the street twenty-four. They're two invoices behind. Um, we're gonna add the hydrant fee on, it's gonna be dispersed amongst everybody.
Don't continue to pay, what?
Nothing, we're gonna do.
We don't do anything?
We're doing a study, and we're gonna have a hydrant fee, uh, on every sin- right now, only people in the city have a hydrant fee. We're gonna put it on every single utility bill, split up evenly, and that way everyone who's in the city, who's out of the city, anybody who gets a water bill. It'll be added on to it. And then that way, we don't have to get payment from Jeff, we don't have to get it from Mylan Township, known township have to pay, it's gonna be taken care of by us.
I would tell you for the hydrant, you know, who has water or sewer bill, gets a hydrant.
I think it's all utilities, right?
Water or sewer, yeah.
Gets a hydrant.
It's any utility, yeah.
Well, it's usually on our water side, but it should be, cause we have homes down here that only have sewer, they should pay hydrant fee too.
I think it was discussed, that's just all utili- the, all utility customers.
Utility customers, she'll, will pay up in here.
Only is you got a couple people expecting to go in, and if their sewer rate goes up.
Plus, they're gonna have a hydrant fee now.
It's, it's only one other person, it's just this person, the Rec Way over here that's hold, this whole property, that's two out of three that's not getting put in, it's only this one guy. Because Rec Way's property doesn't have any services.
Should be two, there should be a lady, wine cop, and then, uh, Hot Ste- Hot Stettler or something.
Is that, uh, that might be these two down here, is that the two at the bottom here in the gray?
Yeah.
So the one is the bottom then?
Hot Stettler, I think, is the bottom one.
Okay.
And then wine cop is the top one.
The middle there.
In the middle here.
Okay, yeah.
The person that, that person's the only person that's not gonna be included who's signed.
Yeah, yeah, but they're gonna have a rate increase and what they navigate that one, I guess.
But that, that's something they have to go talk to their neighbors about, like, the neighbors who were here, who didn't wanna go in, went and talked to all their neighbors and said.
Right.
Hey, let's all bend against this, and so they have to go to their neighbors and say, well, why'd you guys do this? That's part of being in the community, you live with other people in the world, that's what happens.
That'd be the way to handle that, yeah.
So. It's not her fault, but. Their fault, I don't know what they're saying.
Well, bang.
But that's the only person that has signed that's not gonna be included, cause the Rec Way property, they're not gonna be included, but they don't have any utilities out there.
Right.
They're, she's not gonna see it.
And hot settlers in, so.
Not on me, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna worry about it anymore, just, we'll just keep moving forward.
Right. We are the city council of Woodburn, and we have to do what's best for the city of Woodburn.
Yeah.
This is a, a neighborly discussion for them to figure out after the fact, so.
Yep.
Yep.
Alright, so I will call Kevin and tell him to keep moving forward with what I discussed with him on the phone.
Trying to stab me?
The next thing is, uh, um, I'm very excited about the new owners of, uh, a restaurant out there, we had a discussion with Marty today. Um, and I, I got to see some of it.
Oh, well, because you're on our email, on our chat list.
Oh, true, I got to see that too.
You didn't, you're on there, you must have not checked your, your messenger there.
So he's got some, he, he's got some great plans, um, he's replacing a lot of the, the, the kitchen, a lot of the kitchen, uh, stuff inside.
Really, I thought that was all new.
Sink, no, sinks and stoves and whatever, so.
Wow.
Totally gutting the place out, but, uh, um, not the seating area, but the back place. Uh, he also wants to do, um, outside dining next year.
Nice.
He wants to have, uh, a deck out there, um.
To the east of that, right?
To the east, yes.
Keep out the sun.
Yeah, however, um, that's going to run into our property, right there, it's pretty much.
It's, it's for sale.
Pretty mu- yeah, I know, pretty much four feet, four feet past the, uh, you know, the, the property line where the railroad ties are, is our property. So, um, either we could sell him the whole strip, the whole thing, or we could work out a deal where he could. You know, lease some of the property and have partnership, either way.
What does he wanna do? Lease or buy?
He says either way, however, he is aware of the sewer line connecting to the post office. So, um, he's very. Aware of that, so.
You know, as he should be, that's not something that.
Yeah, you can't hide that, right?
Yep.
Okay.
What does that do to anything?
It goes to our property.
Yeah, there's a, a privately owned line that runs through that property.
So that works, he couldn't build on?
I wouldn't.
Old Legion property.
Be- because it's been like that for a while, I wouldn't force anybody to, to do something like that, to make that upgrade. However, if they are going to build on, I doubt Allen County will let them, let them get permitted connecting to sewer without doing something like that. Without spending forty grand and connecting the line to the main sewer line.
So more than likely, he's gonna probably lease so much of our property then from us, is that what you're thinking?
Say it, say it again.
That he might lease instead of buy? Just, just a portion?
I don't know, I, what? I threw, I threw both those options at him, I said, um, either you could buy the whole property, or, um. We could work out a deal where he leases some of the property for the, for the deck or whatever, you know? Um, that could get messy and tricky and, and, you know, and with insurance and all that stuff, so, I, I, you know, it's kinda.
So there's a private sewer going through there, is that ours then?
So.
Now, since we inherited it.
The Legion was using it, I think, and Bob's was using it too, I think, and it goes. I think it connects to the main line of the post office that goes to the street and the main.
Next to the manhole, Legion has a separate line, and Bob's had a separate line back there.
Yeah.
Bob was in a deal with the Legion, that their private line was in there.
Okay.
When we got it, there was, but there was no written deal, it was just a verbal agreement between them, when we purchased it. We made the note, we notified them that your line is now on the city's property, you will need to possibly have to move that if we ever sell this property to something else.
Ah.
And they're aware of that.
So it's in his best, he should just buy it then.
Yeah.
And that way it's his line, he owns it.
And it's there.
And I, I suspect he's willing to buy it, if, if that's, you know.
Alright.
I told him I could only sell it to him for what it was appraised at, and I couldn't, I didn't tell him what it was appraised at yet.
It'd still be so much easier to punch underneath the highway to that manhole, and put another manhole across there, maybe both of them right to the front. Be so much easier.
So, how mu- can you divulge how much that's worth? I mean, is that something that?
I can't remember what, what the appraisal was, do you remember?
I know exactly what it is.
Thirty some, was it thirty-six or something?
Thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I thought it was somewhere in thirties, so, yeah.
Hmm, that's not too bad.
I didn't tell him because I couldn't remember the exact number.
Yeah, it's thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars is what the appraisal came back approximately eight months ago at.
Yeah.
So, it would.
But it's a rent.
Yeah.
It's not like he's renting the building or leasing it.
The way things are going now.
Saying, he might as well just buy that and own that whole strip.
Yep.
I agree, that's.
That'll be a nice parking lot area for him too.
And it'll look nice, it'll at least will keep it up and it'll look nice too, instead of just being a overgrown lot. And I'm assuming he'd be fine with keeping the structure over there too, more foot traffic right by his restaurant.
Well, we, we, I mean, we could cut out a right of way for that structure too.
Five feet to that back or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would be ours.
Where the statue's at?
Yeah, it's a whole thing down through there, yeah.
And say if he wants to buy it, let him buy it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So.
Are we gonna put any bushes or anything around that statue, by the way, or is that just gonna be out there by itself and lonely and crying?
Look kinda lonely, I guess.
It looks very lonely.
It does.
Kinda looks like an afterthought.
You gotta stand out there and present it, that's what I'm thinking about too.
What? No, that's the mayor's job. No, but I mean, are, are we thinking about that down the road or not?
It hasn't been brought up for discussion, so.
I would just have to put it somewhere.
Yeah, I know, I know, I was here, but I just was curious if we're gonna put any.
We never talked about.
How much room is to the right of that? If you're looking at statue, how much room is to the right before you hit the, is there a good amount of room?
To the right of that, if you're, when you're standing, yeah, that's probably twenty feet probably.
So we could put bushes.
And you guys own the whole thing, do every home. You own the whole lot.
Yeah, I know.
Maybe move that bench off that one piece of property over there, little strip, move it over there.
I got, I have three, I still have three benches in the shop.
Oh, you do, there you go, put one out there, it just, it needs something.
I would recommend if we do sell the property, let's keep it in the, in a line for other land acquisition in the future, you know?
The money?
Yeah, the money, the money, like, if we have to purchase right of way somewhere, we'll look at the water tower, you know, stuff like that.
Are we gonna deed ourselves off that piece where that monument is and?
Yeah, we could probably.
Yeah.
Either deed it off or do a right of way or something.
Let him give us, have him give us a right of way maybe, yeah.
Or if you got a better place for it, you can move, move it too, it's not like it's, it's not hard to move, it's really, it's like, it's like eighty pounds.
Yeah.
It's.
Yeah, but what about the cement, the, didn't you put a cement pad in?
That out, the monument, there's only eighty pounds?
Yeah.
It's fiberglass or something.
Yeah.
So let's hope nobody goes off the road and hits it.
I'm curious to see what does this winter, because all the other monuments are rounded, curved, these have V notches in them, it's gonna collect and freeze. I'm curious to see how they're, how well they're gonna handle it.
Is it bowling down? Yeah, better be at eighty pounds, yeah.
Bulldogs have all kinds of little things on them.
Okay, these got big hole.
Bulldogs seem to hold up really well, it's the same material as the Bulldogs.
If you made a right of way there, someone could always, if they wanted to put like a driveway there in the future, that would be fine though, they would get permission to go through it right of way. Cause you're giving off road frontage is what you'd be taking away, which is, that's what people want.
There's not gonna be a driveway there, cause they got the nice, nice sidewalk with that.
We got power box, we had a power box and signs there. There's only one entrance to that property, that's next to the.
So if he wanted to turn that into a parking lot.
They just go through that regular driveway. Is that his property? Or is that driveway to get into that?
No, hi- his building, that building's almost on city property, it's only, it's only this far off city. We own all the, almost, except for like two feet from the building.
Well, you better think positive about our sculpture, don't be thinking about stuff.
We're not the only one, everyone they put in is that way. I've got them big, big notches, this, this long, it's like, ooh, it's what those don't.
Is there a bench at the, at the restaurant?
Yeah, there is.
We'll just have to have somebody go down there and sweep the snow off and the ice.
That's Main Street, right?
All right, uh, John, you have anything?
Nope.
Nope.
You can add that to your.
No.
Sculpture maintenance.
I got, I got the, um, the computers and the iPads ordered, I just got the quote from them today, but they sent it at four twenty-five PM. It is, um, the original quote that I gave you guys was nine thousand nine fifty-five, and this comes in below that. It's at ninety-eight twenty-two, so it's about a little over a hundred dollars less than what I originally showed you guys. I just, I just got this quote from today, so I'm gonna call them back tomorrow, I don't know, I don't know how it's worked out.
Hopefully within the month. What are you gonna do with the old ones? I don't know yet.
Yeah, I wondered that myself, remember?
I have no idea.
You wanted one, my wife wouldn't mind buying one. But if, you know.
I don't know whose choice that is or how you go about that.
Minimal value assets, so it's.
Sure you want one though, though.
I don't know.
I mean, there's, well, there's nine of them, so. These are from twenty twenty.
Uh, I, I would imagine that one and this one. Probably have to be newbed or kept.
Nubed, is that what you said?
I mean, there's a lot of stuff on that right there.
Yeah.
I don't know about that.
Yeah, you don't.
So, I'm assuming this is the same way, you got a lot of.
All nine of them combined are probably less than, I mean, less than a thousand dollars. So. Theoretically, you would just toss them in a bin.
So we can give you fifty bucks for them, you'll take that?
I don't think, it's not, I don't think it's my decision.
I'll tell you mine for that.
I'll move to a jury.
Ours have a lot of government.